Okay, we're back in public session. In non-public, we did approve and we did seal those minutes. So, and what we're going to do now is go into Commissioner's work session. And we'll be looking at the policy manual. And I think we're starting with Section 3, General Policies, on page 13. Is that right? Or is it page 19?
I have some other Commissioner's work session that I want to talk sometime before you.
Okay.
Okay, so you're talking about the manual?
Yep.
Let's take page 21st.
Yes, 21, 21 to 30.
21, okay, we need to go to 19, okay.
So we have harassment policy and the IT. And we're going to the DRE and the social networking policy.
In addition-
How many policies are we doing through?
Through 29, did you say?
Well, 29 is another one, is workplace violence policy.
In addition to that, I have the nondisclosure of private or privileged communications that you had asked that we do that is inserted into that, the recording of the conversations.
Okay, so where is that going to be?
It is actually going to be, you know, I think we're going to end up changing a lot of these pages, but I believe it's going to be under Section 3 of the general policies.
We will get a new one saying, you give me a new one.
I'll give you a final version after we've made all the changes that we've talked about.
Yeah, let's go. Just put it in.
Okay, we're on harassment policy, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you see any changes that need to be made in harassment policy?
This is the harassment policy, what already six, what the county has. Were there any changes made in it?
No.
So this is the same-
Harassment is defined, sexual harassment is defined.
One thing that I just noticed that is not included in here that needs to be is also a anti-discrimination policy. That's not listed in here, and we really need to put that in, so we're going to add another page to that.
So we have to hire them if they're Democrats?
You're on tape now.
Okay.
Okay, but I thought I read something from discrimination.
I think when I look at harassment-
It said already, HX was called an action.
That's harassment. You can't harass anybody based on those things, but we need something to state discrimination as well, based on disability or gender.
Isn't that, that's a whole federal thing that takes in everybody, right?
It is, it is.
I thought it was covered on the harassment policy.
No, it's really a separate policy, and that gets more into, then you get into people with disabilities and American with Disabilities Act and everything, so all of that has to be in it.
Okay, so that needs to be separate.
It needs to be a separate policy, but can be in the same general policies category.
Jan, um-
Did you give us-
We, I don't know, do you get certified for ADD, ADA, or is it just something that happens? We don't have a problem if we want to hire somebody and they're handicapped, we're all accessible, so everybody will have an opportunity to work here?
Everyone should have the opportunity if they are qualified to do the job with or without accommodation. So then you get into whether or not it's a reasonable accommodation, and you have to look at what that entails for that particular person. If it's nothing more than getting a computer with maybe extra hearing capability or Braille keyboard, that would certainly be reasonable. If it's so expensive that it makes it cost prohibitive, then you start getting into whether or not that's feasible.
But as far as you know, we're all set to hire-
As far as I know.
Ninety-nine percent of the public-
All our buildings are ADA.
All ADA compliant.
We got elevators, we got-
I'm thinking about somebody on the farm or somebody-
Oh, that would be kind of difficult on the phone. Especially if they're in a wheelchair.
There, you know, there's so many possibilities of what constitutes a disability and what accommodations they would need that we'd have to look at it as a case-by-case basis.
Well, we should certainly be doing as much as we can to make it possible to hire people.
Absolutely.
And as long as we've made that attempt, I don't feel badly that something might happen to us from the government, as long as we've made an honest attempt to do it right.
Okay, let's look at harassment policy. My thinking on harassment is that it may not be just one case, it may be more than one considered to be harassment. I mean, you're all the time going back, the next day you go back and you harass him or her again, or next week you go back and you harass him or her again.
So it needs to be continued, so for amount like-
At least more than once.
Usually harassment is a pattern of conduct that takes place. I would hesitate to narrow what that is, how many times it has to happen, it all depends upon the facts. But normally, and again, I'll say, I hate to say this on camera, but a single incident of bad behavior does not necessarily constitute harassment. It might be actionable, you can still take action against them, but harassment implies that there's a pattern of conduct over time.
So should that be in here somewhere?
Um, I don't think it needs to be.
You don't think it needs to be there?
No, I don't think so.
It shouldn't be under procedure?
Well, I think we're reserving-
Complaints of any form of harassment.
Mm-hmm. I think we're reserving the right to look at inappropriate conduct and see whether or not it does meet the definition of harassment or whether or not it's a singular bad act.
Jan, I do have one, a problem with one phrase here. This policy applies to all work-related activities. That would tell me that if somebody, somebody's through work and sitting out here in their car and somebody harasses them, that that's not covered because it's not a work-related activity. Or they could be down, two employees could be downtown and one's harassing the other off of county property. I just, I think that harassment's harassment, whether you do it here, whether it's related to work or-
I do agree with you to a certain extent, and I know generally if something happens off work time, it usually will carry over to the workplace. However, I'm not a police officer in following people around after work hours. We can only control what happens here.
And if we have to investigate it?
I mean, the only time that I could see it flowing, you know, like a social situation flowing over into a work environment is if it continues at work or if, well-
Why not just, this, this policy applies anywhere on the county complex.
Well, it does say that, doesn't it?
No, it says work-related activities on the county.
Policy applies to all work-related activities anywhere on the county complex. Also includes business travel, business-related social events, computers and so forth. So you want me to take out work-related activities?
Well, I'm only one vote, I'd take it out, I don't know how my two associates feel. I'd make it, this policy applies to all, to-
All activities?
To anywhere on the county complex, whether indoors or outdoors, and also includes business travel, business-related social events.
What do you think, Asha?
Yeah, I think I have addressed this a while ago, about harassment policy.
Applies to anywhere on the county complex.
So if I took out the words "work-related" and just put this-
All work-related activities?
All activities, all activities anywhere on county complex.
I'd be okay too.
Mm-hmm.
It's just the "work-related," makes it, makes it too close to me.
Okay.
All right, let's say somebody is harassing somebody on Facebook.
That'd be on the social media we have.
Okay, any other things?
Yeah, the page 22nd, there will be a complaint investigation, so I don't, who are they going to bring in to the investigation?
And where are you, Asha, please?
Complaint investigation, second to third.
Page 22nd?
Well, it's, in the paragraph prior to, it would be, they would report it to the supervisor, department head or human resources. In the event that the supervisor or department head is named as a perpetrator, HR would be contacted. I would obviously involve the commissioners in anything as serious as a harassment complaint.
Yeah, and who's doing the investigation?
I would be, unless the commissioners felt that it should be someone from the outside.
Upon completion of the investigation, the appropriate parties will be notified and corrective and preventive actions will be taken. By who?
Whether it's myself or the commission.
And the board.
By supervisor, by commissioners?
No, by the board, board of commissioners.
Depending on the outcome, whether you would, you folks would have to be involved all the way in something as serious as harassment. But whether it's an outside investigator or myself bringing findings to you, we can make recommendations, but it's really up to you folks as to what happens.
Now, we just had a conversation regarding attorney-client privilege. The investigation was given to the attorney and therefore became attorney-private. And therefore not subject to 91A, so it's not really-
Really? Okay.
Right? Okay, any further discussion on harassment?
Any employee found to have acted in violation of his policy subject disciplinary action up to and including termination. So is that mean if somebody filed a complaint and the findings were that the complainant is wrong, that abortion will be terminated?
No, never is there an intent in anything here for, someone who comes forward in good faith and makes a complaint, good faith, that's really the key.
So is this in bad faith, then? What is this?
No, this is just stating that any employee found to have acted in violation, so they're found that, we can substantiate that this harassment took place. They face disciplinary action up to and including termination, that we take it seriously. Termination, you know, is, no, this doesn't address bad faith complaints, this part doesn't.
Okay.
But the retaliation clause is actually, that's where all litigation is coming out of the courts right now. It's all in retaliation for someone bringing forth a good faith complaint, and then people retaliating against that person for doing it.
Okay. And we have it all in here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we're going to do the next policy.
Information technology, electronic communications policy.
I have one here.
Go ahead.
County IT resources, this is about, under policy, the fourth line, and the property of Carroll County and are intended for business use only. We have all kinds of people working on this county that are using phones that are supplied to them by the county that aren't being used just for business. How do we handle that?
Well, this addresses that. This would now give you the option of the department head to say you're violating our policy. Part of the problem with not having policies in places, you have nothing to hold people accountable to. You have to demonstrate that they had the opportunity to read it, understand it, ask questions, and then if they still violate it, then there's grounds for discipline.
And the Latin italics down below, employees should also note that the use of user IDs and passwords does not create a right of privacy or diminish Carroll County's right to access or in or monitor county IT resources. What does that mean?
What that means is that just because you've password-protected your, whether it's a business phone, your computer, that the county reserves the right, in any sort of investigation, the county would then have the right to go to Cybertron or whoever the IT person is and say, "I need for you to recover all emails from this timeframe."
Okay, that's what I thought it said.
So there's no expectation of priv-, unlike your personal computer at home, when you're using county property, you do not have the right to expect that anything you put on there will remain private. It's not.
So that's the basis of my question. So if you go to the internet and you put in worldpath.com and your username and your password and the messages you've gotten today pop up or however long you've had them, that is not what you're saying here. Those are not protected by any privacy law because they're on the county's equipment.
That's right. There's, it's putting people on notice that there's no expectation of privacy, that you're giving up your right, unlike when you use your own personal equipment. When you're using county equipment, you have no right to privacy to say that was a personal email, that was a personal letter, you did it on county property.
I don't know how the others feel, but I'd like to see between information technology, electronic communication policy and purpose, a big font that says, "No, use of, use of your own private ID or password does not ensure your privacy, your rights to privacy when using county property," or something like that. Something big, so they know it's really important, because that's pretty easy to breeze over if you're-
Do you want me just to make what's currently in bold and italicized, make that in a larger font so that it stands out?
Well, today's social media, I think people really ought to be made aware, they don't have any privacy rights, when they're using our equipment.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think Ed would like to add something.
Ed? How are you going to handle web-based emails that aren't really held on the hard drives of the computers at the county? If you have a Yahoo or a Gmail account that your employees are accessing from their computer here, that information doesn't go down onto the computer, so how are we going to handle a 91A request that's for somebody's personal email?
Well, I wouldn't think we'd have access to somebody's personal email.
Well, there are people that use their personal email accounts. I believe somebody would already use Yahoo and Gmail, so how, how does that work and how are you going to-
That's a good question, I don't know.
That's what-
I don't know.
Your point is that it goes out to the clouds, it isn't stored on the server?
Correct, so if I put, now I already know that if I wanted a 91A request for Commissioner Babson's email, I would have to, I believe I have to get a subpoena to-
I believe you would.
To go to Yahoo or Gmail or whatever it is in order to get that. But it might be, it might be good to, to make, tell the employees that any county business should be with their county emails, that's why you have county emails. It shouldn't be on their personal emails.
Right.
Because they're harder to get at. Just wanted to put that out there.
Except that not all employees have email through the county. For example, all the LNA's at the nursing home, none of them have email.
They're using their personal email.
I would think they'd have to.
You got a solution for that, Mr. Guru?
Assign everybody an email. I don't know how much it costs to add an email.
I don't know.
But Virtual Town Hall, I believe, gives a certain number of emails out. I thought Brookfield just found out that it costs an extra $10 or something like that for each email. There's an actual amount you have to pay for every email.
Okay.
Because there has to be space put for each person.
Mm.
But for 91A, now, you just went to New Hampshire Association of Counties seminar on 91A requests. Now, if you read through that, it does specify how to handle your electronic emails and how they have to be accessible, that you have to keep those recorded. My issue with having a Gmail account or a Yahoo account is there's, there's really no way to control that.
Mm-hmm.
But you can control, you can control the person using that email.
Mm-hmm.
If you're using, if you're doing county business, it has to be on a county website, a county email account.
So Ed, are you saying that if the three of us had Gmail accounts or Yahoo accounts, we could communicate back and forth here, and then if anybody came looking for our emails, they wouldn't see them?
They would take our computer.
They would have to act, they would have to put a, I think they have to subpoena the, the person that's holding the email. So if it's Yahoo or Google, it would have to, it has to go through that channel.
Okay.
And for transparency, if everybody realizes that you're doing county business on the county website servers, then it should be automatically stored on your servers. So if somebody puts a 91A request in, you can very easily-
It is that.
And transparently just go to that server, take the email that they want it all, give it to them. But if they have to go through Yahoo and Google, you know, it sets up, you know, why are you using personal if you spent all this money on this website? We should have, in large cities, they all have their individual email accounts.
Right.
They are not supposed to use their personal accounts for county business. That's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. As a result of somebody, well, we had a case where somebody didn't sign off, somebody else came in and used it. What is the penalty then?
Well, I would think it would depend on what happened. I mean, is that a common occurrence, that people use shared computers?
No. It's a case where somebody used somebody else's computer, put their email address on it and password, didn't sign off, and then that person came back to use their own computer, was able to get everything out of that person's account.
Mm.
I don't know if that addresses it or not. I mean, that, it shouldn't happen, they shouldn't be using somebody else's, and if they do, they ought to sign off and not leave it open.
Right.
But you need to have some evidence. If you said somebody else, you don't sign off and somebody else went there and used it, I mean, you cannot just, me gosh, see that.
This does say unauthorized access of another employee's email, stored files, storage devices or software is considered a breach of this policy, and it's every employee's responsibility to immediately shut down the computer issued to them.
Where are you reading that?
If it's found to be logged on.
ID passwords?
It's down under IDs and passwords?
I have a correction, I have a, not a correction, but you have written here, "IDs and passwords shall not be shared with anyone outside the organization."
Mm-hmm.
I would say user IDs and passwords shall not be shared with anyone.
Yeah.
They are, they are strictly confidential, and take out the-
Outside the-
All the outside organizations, yeah. User IDs and passwords shall be, shall not be shared with anybody, they are confidential or they are county property or they are whatever. I have a note up top that says, where it says, "User IDs and passwords are confidential," I'd strike that and just say, "User IDs and passwords shall not be shared with anybody, they are confidential." Or I'd even go farther than that, Jan, I'd say strictly confidential.
Okay.
Where are you, where was that correction?
Right in the middle. Passwords and IDs.
With anyone from there on?
Are strictly confidential and shall not be shared with anyone.
Okay, you said never share passwords with anyone, including a network administrator. But the network administrator, he has everything, I mean, he has access.
He does, but then you can go in and change your password, I don't know if, he still has remote access.
Yeah, he will, he still will have the access, I mean.
Network administrator?
Oh.
Cybertron?
Yeah.
So if you share it, don't share it, I mean, he has access.
And then I would put after unauthorized access of another employee's emails, stored files, storage devices or software will be considered a breach of policy and may result in immediate termination.
Yeah.
Okay, so where are you?
And then you put it in here later on, but just to make sure that it's, that they understand.
Do you want me to say, "Subject to discipline up to and including termination"?
Yes.
So the monitoring, Carroll County's search right to access and view at any time all information in any Carroll County IT resources. Is that means that the Board of Commissioners can go anytime?
We reserve the right to do that, and I would think it would only be as a result of some sort of investigation, we don't, unless you want to go poking around.
So by the internet use, it said access to the internet is a tenant for business use only.
Mm-hmm.
Can we add that we don't watch part- Can we add that we don't watch porno and dating sites?
Do we need to, really?
Add what, Asha?
Porno sites and dating sites.
No E-Trade accounts, no.
So the violations, so the employees are, if there is a violation, who are they reporting to? Their supervisor?
Yep, immediate supervisor, department head or human resources.
Or the department head or human resources.
Who in turn notifies the network administrator.
So they're not notifying the Board of Commissioners?
Not right off the bat.
Oh, okay. So it goes to the supervisor, department head.
Network administrator, so that the network administrator, who in, at the moment is, is John Rich, could then go in, verify that in fact this has happened, and then would take it to you.
We're the only ones that can terminate, so it has to come back to us.
Right.
All right, anything else under that? Go to social media policy?
Is it a new thing what you just added there or not?
That's where it's going to be, yeah. The interception recording and the disclosure of privileged communications. That's where it's going to be inserted.
Yeah, okay, I insert.
And then social media policy. Okay.
And where did you get that?
Out of the statute, just rephrasing.
Okay, so you just copied it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what we call the dispatch center, communication center?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that was news to me, too.
Oh, I've got a note here. It says, "On, on their own time and computers," I must be referring to purpose. I guess it, I guess my thinking was when I read it that it looks like we're not allowing them to do it at home on their own computers.
Oh, no, no.
Mm-mm.
And in fact, you'll see even Howie Chandler was talking about the nursing homes Facebook page and how many hits they got. So, I mean, it's a valid, very, very valid form of advertising and communicating, but it's just when it's done incorrectly.
And then down the bottom,
Mm-hmm.
I have highlighted supervisors may be held personally responsible for offensive communications or photos that occur on social media sites between coworkers outside the workplace on personal equipment.
Yep.
I, I'm sorry, I just can't see where a supervisor is responsible for the actions of one of their employees at home on their own computer that's emailing somebody else.
Because what has been recently held, and this is a whole new area for the courts.
Right.
A supervisor was held responsible for simply friending coworkers, people below them. And then one coworker was saying horrible things about another coworker and clicked like. So that was viewed as he agreed or promoted that harassment, that threatening action, and so forth. And they were held responsible. All of this was done outside the workplace, but it was that supervisor underlying relationship that created the liability for the company as well as the individuals. So that's where we're going.
Maybe a cause for people not wanting to be supervisor.
Well, I think being very careful who you friend, very careful.
Hmm.
As people are finding out now with Facebook and its privacy rights, they've relaxed them somewhat so that you may not have friended somebody who works for you, but if you are friends with someone else who is a friend of theirs, they can see everything you post.
On Facebook, you-
Yeah. They have to be, people have to be extremely careful what they put out on social media sites because number one, it's there forever. And number two, you just really don't know who's, who else is going to see it.
Everyone can see it, you say?
Well, depending on how you restrict your privacy and so forth, but you have to actively go in and set all those privacy controls. And I don't think a lot of people are that savvy to do it. It's an interesting area, and it's very, very active in the courts right now.
On, on page 27, under F, I have this thing all lit up with fluorescent marking.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure why, one of the notes, it sounds like somebody else's work.
Well, it is, it is. But I mean, these things are pertinent to us as well. It is someone else's work. It's actually, um, he put on a seminar at the annual NACO conference that we had up at Settlers Green.
Mm-hmm.
He is both an attorney and a police officer from, I think it's Portsmouth. His name is McDonald. And he drafted this.
Does he sell hamburgers?
I'm sorry?
Does he sell hamburgers?
No, no. Um, but he's also the state CAC officer, I guess, um, crimes against children. So he's very internet savvy, as well as having, you know, a law degree and practicing well.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, young man.
Yep.
Very good speaker. This is his policy, and he has defended this. So I said, well, this is the best we have out there and the most comprehensive. Let's go with this one.
So if, if, if my daughter or my wife or friend gets a traffic stop, I can't, I can't say on, on Facebook, Sally, may he get stopped for going two miles over the speed limit today?
Well, I think-
Says criminal or traffic stops.
Our investigations. I think this is more designed for like our sheriff department not to be putting out things that they learn under their, their work environment on Facebook.
Okay.
Administrative investigations or actions, clearly, I mean, that one speaks for itself. But any sort of official agency issues, whether it's the jail or the sheriff, or personnel actions and so forth. You know, can you believe what they did to Sally yesterday at work for, you know, calling in sick for the 20th time? That I see all the time on Facebook.
I do, too.
Mm-hmm.
All right. We're looking at workplace violence policy.
The policy, the social network policy, is you get it from, did you copy it from?
Yep, he actually handed it out at the seminar.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
And is it the same with the workplace violence policy?
No, no, this one was actually developed through Primex.
Okay. So you just got it?
Yep, um, yes. They, uh, Primex had done a seminar or a program on work, violence in the workplace and bullying.
Oh, okay, yeah, I remember, last year, that was a work.
Um, number four. Examples of workplace violence.
Mm-hmm.
Do we really need to put in the unintentional damage? I mean, if a person didn't do it on purpose, yes, how can it be, it could, I'd even go so far as to say it probably isn't violent if you did it unintentionally.
But if property is damaged from an act of violence?
Wouldn't that be, wouldn't that be an action between the, the person that owns the property and the person that damaged it?
Not necessarily.
An accident's an accident.
Well, if I take a shot at you and you duck, and I blow it through the nursing home window and shattered the window, that's, I didn't mean to shatter the window.
I wouldn't call that an accident, no, it's a shooting at somebody.
Well, I didn't intend to shoot the window, I intended to shoot you.
It wasn't intentional. I meant to kill you, but I broke the window instead.
Right, right, therefore I'm not responsible?
Doesn't make any sense.
Any action that flows from an act of violence, whether it's property damage or personal injury, you're responsible for.
Look at number nine. Unauthorized possession or inappropriate use of a firearm.
Something's missing.
Hmm?
It's, ends strange. Something's funky with that sentence. Unauthorized possession or inappropriate use of firearms or any other-
Unauthorized possession.
Weapon. Unauthorized possession. Yeah. It's worded strange.
Weapon or weapons it's supposed to be, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't like the way that's worded.
What is inappropriate use of a firearm?
That's a good question.
Edward, Edward comes in here with his, um-
Points his gun at us.
-firearm, which is perfectly legal.
Right.
I don't find it, I don't find it the least bit inappropriate.
Right.
But somebody else might. So, you know, aren't we making this very, very, very subjective?
Very, and that's why I'd rather take it out, because I'm not sure what, how unauthorized possession of a firearm constitutes-
Yeah.
A threat of bullying.
I would say that would be flat out breaking the law if it's unauthorized.
Yeah. But the inappropriate use of a fire, I don't know.
What it says, excuse me.
Go ahead, Ed.
What it said, unauthorized, did it say something?
Unauthorized possession or inappropriate use of a firearm.
Meaning if you're a felon-
Under workplace.
If you're a felon and a felon cannot be in possession of a firearm, that would be-
Breaking the law.
That would be an unauthorized use of a firearm, or unauthorized possession of a weapon or firearm.
Yes, and that's a crime, but I'm not sure why this is in our workplace violence policy. If it was an inappropriate display or a threatening gesture with a firearm, but the mere unauthorized possession, I don't think belongs in here.
Well, I, I'd even go farther. Inappropriate use is the one that bothers me.
Mm.
I mean, there's people sitting in here, this delegation, we even think Ed comes in with his gun is inappropriate.
Mm-hmm.
I'm on the other side of it, I don't. And, um, and I don't think that needs to be in our policy.
By law.
Huh?
By law.
Well, I know-
There's a permit, I assume.
Right. The implication from it being in here is that somehow the unauthorized use translates to a threat or unauthorized possession, but I'm just not sure that that's accurate. So I, I would, let me work on that.
I'm going to print my own copy, it's coming out of here, Jan.
I thought this was our sheriff's department or the jail if another employee or somebody used their firearm or weapon.
Yes, but I'm just not sure how, how an unauthorized possession constitutes workplace violence. Can I, can I think about that and see, maybe look at a couple other policies and see if it's, if I can nail down the wording a little bit tighter? Because I don't like that.
So we have bullying here, too?
Mm-hmm.
We now down on bullying?
Yeah.
Number two. Again, it's subjective. Unreasonable criticism. Who makes that decision?
I'll blame.
Depends on the facts.
Spreading rumor.
Well, it's got to be reported, so. And I don't see how blaming somebody can be bullying. I can, in some cases, and I can see in other places that easily it wouldn't be.
It would have to depend upon the facts again. If you had somebody of Muslim faith and you're constantly telling them they're responsible for 9/11, that could be unreasonable and could fall under this. All of this is subjective, because what may feel like harassment to one person may not to someone else under identical circumstances.
Where in there, or in this handbook, would it say that the commissioners may investigate and find that it's unfounded and no further investigation needs to be done?
Well, I think we've said it in a couple of places. We've talked, well, you're the final arbiters, first of all. You folks decide and you're, you have the final word.
I mean, even if somebody requests that an outside attorney investigate it,
Mm-hmm.
where would it say that, that's up to the Board of Commissioners?
I think it's under the complaint procedure.
And are we the final arbitrators? I thought the delegation had a personnel board to handle the final arbitration.
For non-union.
For non-union? We are for union.
Well, there's always, there's always the opportunity to proceed to court. Always. We can never take that right again.
Final short of court?
Yes.
I don't believe the commissioners are the final arbitrators.
Well, they can request, they can appeal county commissioners.
They can appeal to the committee.
Yes.
And here's another one that I, I'm going to highlight this one because I don't think this is a- All suspicious- All suspicious individuals.
Where are you?
Page twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. All suspicious individuals or activities should report, be reported as soon as possible. Obviously, they should be, but why should that be under bullying or workplace violence?
Because that's what it pertains to.
Because you're suspicious looking, you're violent?
Potentially. If someone's sneaking around looking in windows or hanging around cars, sure.
If you're dropping black bags off next to the administration building, yeah, you might be.
Suspicious looking packages.
Suspicious individuals. Well, it could be...
How about any individual who observes or becomes aware of workplace violence, comma, bullying, or suspicious or suspicious individual or activities should immediately contact his or her supervisor? So it isn't hanging out there like it's gonna happen tomorrow.
I could do that. That's fine. Commissioner Sorensen, in the complaint portion of way back, let's see, I think it's my page seventeen. I'm not sure which one yours is. But it does talk about timeframes for the commissioners to render a decision and then under county commissioner appeal, decision by the board of commissioners will be considered final. And then, of course, that individual always has the right to pursue any other administrative remedies or otherwise, whether it's court or Department of Labor.
Okay.
We're stopping there?
All right. We get any more? Anything else on that one?
The next time we'll go through benefits.
Next time we'll go through...
Section four.
Page thirty-eight. Yeah, we'll just go through section four, employee benefits.
Yep. Then I had a quick question for you. We have an opening at the farm, which Will would like advertised.
Yeah.
Also, Becky Mason has per diem RN LPN positions open and the jail has an RN part-time position open. They'd like me to do an ad. Would you like me to add the business office position into that or hold off?
Friday was the last date.
You want me to wait till Friday?
Wait till after Friday. I think right now we have three people that have
Yes.
shown an interest. Maybe there'll be more. I don't know.
Three people somewhere added from the complex?
Yeah. And I'm not sure they want their names to be disclosed because
Right.
their department heads might retaliate or have some reaction to it.
I will wait and then on Friday for, I guess, Tuesday's Conway Daily Sun, we can put it on the website, these other positions as well.
Well, and that... They were given, anybody on a complex was given two weeks to show some kind of interest.
Right.
And it was up on Friday.
Right.
So...
Up on this coming Friday?
Yes.
This Friday. I think we ought to wait until next Wednesday
Okay.
for us to decide whether we, what we should do with those
Okay.
whoever, how many others show an interest before you advertise outside?
I didn't know about. So you sent a notice out to the department heads that they have two weeks. Yep. I didn't know about it.
We decided to do it internally so that anybody wanted to move up or move sideways, they could do that.
And this Friday, that is the second week?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we have already three, so three people already applying?
Yeah. Okay.
I have a couple of things for Jan and one thing. Jan, what are we doing about exit interviews? Who's conducting them? The superintendent of the department, the director, or you?
My office is if we know about it before they leave. If we don't know before they leave, then we mail it to them and ask them to complete it and send it back. And that it is not contained in their personnel file. It's separate and apart and it's only designed to help us get better at retention.
What is the, what is your track record so far? Are people filling them out or...
They're hesitant. Very hesitant.
Hesitant?
Hesitant.
Hesitant.
Do you have any idea why? They're gone. What do they care? You might give them a bad recommendation?
Well, that can't happen.
I know that, but a lot of people don't know that.
That's true. I think maybe in terms of possible rehire down the road in another capacity, they don't wanna say something that might be viewed as negative.
Okay, that makes sense.
I can't answer it. Maybe can't be bothered. We've gotten a few back, but not as many as other ones.
Many as you can get. I think that's really important information.
I do too.
You know, maybe we can, if we can save one or two employees in the future something we've learned from somebody else, it's well worth it.
We have much better success when we have a two-week notice because then we can make it a point to get to that person and schedule a time for them to come in so we can talk about continuing benefits if they choose to, you know, and by the way, would you mind completing this right now?
Yeah.
But we don't always have that luxury, unfortunately. That is one thing I'm gonna very soon start looking at, is what our retention rates are in turnover rates because it is costing us a lot of money. Just losing one employee, as you know, with training time and paying overtime for others to pick up the slack and advertising and getting that person up to speed, it's very, very expensive.
And will you start getting into the county attorney's office where they come here six months in a year, leave?
That's not unusual, though.
Huh?
That's not unusual.
Well, we were making an attempt to help curtail it here by raising the pay for them.
But then our new attorney cut it out. Reduce that wage in front of the subcommittee, anyway.
I thought it was the assistant county attorney.
That's what I meant. That's what I meant.
But I think they're in a little bit different position only because it is a known fact that a young attorney, that is the best way to get trial experience. You come in, you work for a DA's office. You can't afford to do it for too long because of the pay associated with it. And most of us coming out of law school have a lot of loans. So you do it for the experience because in six months you can get more trial experience under your belt than working three years for a private law firm. It makes you that much more attractive to any law firm that's out there and you can demand a higher starting salary. So for that reason, I would understand turnover in that office, very much so. I'd like to see it a little less in other departments, but I don't really have a good grasp on why.
Well, that's what I mean. Talking to Jason, I believe he told me last year eleven, eleven people left.
You gotta watch that eleven because some of them were terminated.
Yep. Some were terminated and I think he said that five or six, that five or six had gone somewhere else. And it's a shame to be training these people
It is.
and then losing them.
It is. And I'd like to take a look at national standards too and see whether or not they're outside the norm or whether or not they're right in par with what's happening nationally. That doesn't mean that there might not still be an issue that we need to address, but...
Regarding the nursing home, the subcommittee is recommending an additional dollar for LNA's. I mentioned that to Clausen and Clausen says... Well, initially he said we need to open up the contract for that and then he said, well, you can do a
Addendum.
Addendum, as long as
Sidebar, he called it.
Yeah, sidebar. As the commissioners, the nursing home administrators, and the union agree to it, then he would write up something regarding that.
That might bring us a little bit closer in line. LNA's in particular, that might bring us a little closer in line to even the other counties.
Yeah. Yeah, but what happens to housekeeping?
I know.
What happens to maintenance? They're gonna wanna increase too. I'm sure some of the non-union employees over at the jail thought that they were going to get that extra money, but it was strictly through the union contract.
Right, right.
So it does cause problems and sometimes the problems it causes is that you have to move everybody else up too.
Sure. Yeah.
I know there's one LNA that's making better than eighteen dollars an hour.
Right. Is that more for longevity though?
Yeah, but she also been here for five years.
That's true. That's very true. But should she or he get that extra dollar? They're looking at increasing the base pay
Very good question.
from, is it ten and a quarter now or something?
Ten.
Ten? Up to eleven. So anybody that's making ten or ten fifty?
We'll get the box, but anybody making more than that?
Yeah, and they're all over the place in between ten and eighteen fifty or eighteen and a quarter, whatever that is.
Well, it might make some sense to look at compensation across the board and institute some sort of formalized program with steps for each.
Yeah.
And that when you reach your max, you get a one percent or two percent cost of living and that's it, your max done.
Yeah.
For the position.
Yeah.
And then they leave.
Well, that would be the unfortunate part, yeah.
Okay. Janice has provided, I think, all three of us
This would just give...
performance evaluation.
Oh, yes.
I think we all need to look at it and come up with one because we owe Janice, who's gonna be coming off for six months, how he's gonna be coming off his six months. So those two definitely need to be evaluated fairly quickly. And there are other people like
Jason.
Jason, Will.
Kathy.
Kathy.
Well, everybody ought to be evaluated.
Well, that's true, but I'm talking about what we're responsible for. I can't think of any of the others.
I didn't get one of those.
I emailed them.
I couldn't, I couldn't get it off. My printer wasn't working. I couldn't get it off. So she made a copy for me.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so take a look at that.
You sent us this one.
Yeah.
She gave it to you.
Yeah, I got it.
And I do have a copy down on my desk of what we are presently using. So we got three. And I think also in my previous job, the person also did a self-evaluation. And then whoever did the evaluation, in which case it's the three of us, we have to agree on the evaluation. But then we call in the person being evaluated and see what he or she has for self-evaluation and move on from there. Is that something that we wanna consider, a self-evaluation? As to where the employee feels that he or she is?
Yeah.
Okay.
So once you decide on a form, I'll just cut and paste basically and do a self-evaluation with the same criteria.
Okay, let's see if we can come up with something for next week as to our performance evaluation for the people we need to evaluate. I do have the job description for the administrative assistant, which is Laurie's position. You can get a copy of that. If you wanna change any of the functions of that person, we need to do it now before we hire somebody. We can always, you know, there's always the comment in there where such are the duties as assigned fit in, but if there's anything that we need to look at, do so. Anything else we need to talk about this morning?
I have some on the
You may.
paperwork session.
Yep. Go ahead.
Despite what our legal counsel told us this morning, I am continuing my fight to get the Kenny Reed final report made public. I'm gonna make a motion after I read this. I received an email from, that I'd like to read.
Don't say, don't say where it came from.
Why? She sent it to me and asked me to make it public.
All right, go ahead.
Commissioner Babson, I have been reading the local newspapers related to the activity of the county and note there are still discussions regarding Ms. Reed's grievance. I was involved in the investigation and never received a report of the findings. As a resident of Carroll County, I would like to seek closure to this matter so the commissioners may move on to other matters concerning the county. I therefore request this report be made public. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. Sandy McKenzie. I'd like to go in the minutes. I don't expect anybody to read, open it, but I would like to make a motion that Robin Reed be given the opportunity to read the final report. The stipulation that she comes to the county and under the guidance of the county attorney's office and that in no way can she transcribe any of the material in it. But I think it says, I told the lawyer this morning, I think it's grossly unfair that one person in the grievance be allowed to read it and the other one not. And so I'd like to make the motion. And I guess that was discussion. I should have made the motion. I make the motion.
Your motion again is not to release it publicly, but to let the other person know?
Let her come in here under the guidance of the county attorney
Yeah.
and read the final report. And in no way, in any way, shape, or manner can she transcribe any of the material in that report and that she leaves without it. I wouldn't ordinarily do it, but I really feel it's grossly unfair that one person, I think the way they've done it was Commissioner Solomon and Commissioner Sorensen should have gotten the report and had it, or both, all three of you, plus Robin Reed. And she was the one that filed the grievance.
So Commissioner Babson, are you going to let everyone, Ms. Woodburn also coming in and read the report, all the investigations that we had and read it? What is unfair? You already got the explanation from our legal counsel that usually goes through the employers. And action was taken. There was a letter sent and it said it's confidential information and it's not subjected under the ninety-one A and was publicized in the paper. And another thing what you also bring up, you said it needs to go by the county attorney so she cannot copy and do whatever. I just wanna tell you it is going to be a conflict of interest because the county attorney, what we have now, is the attorney of Robin Reed.
Okay, then let's, we'll pick somebody else. I just, I want somebody in the room making sure that that the parameters we set up are followed. Have it the sheriff. I don't care who it is.
I know we're discussing it and I would continue to discuss it. My point is that I'd like to go back and see the letter that we sent to Robin Reed regarding the investigation and what was included in that letter before I would vote on letting her have or see the whole investigation. I'd like to see what that letter had said.
So my motion didn't get a second?
Right, at this point in time.
I assume, Commissioner Kenny, you're not seconding it?
Well, I think it would be a violation because of this attorney-client privilege and so you're going to filing that law, that you're just going to let the employee come here and read that grievance. I think...
Who?
I will do that.
For what?
Well, you will see. This is attorney-client privileged report and it is not for disclosure under the 91A and you clearly violated the law by doing that. Even making a motion is inappropriate and even a second is inappropriate and I will take action.
Fine.
And also, Liz Bailey also said, and everyone knows, even if it was not attorney-client privilege, personal issue is exempt from the law, is exempt from the 91A. You continue to want to break the law.
You're not saying that it was seconded? I didn't second it? The motion that he just made?
I thought he said you seconded it.
I didn't second it, no. As he said, it wasn't seconded. So, again, I'd like to go back and see that letter that was sent to Robin Reed as to what was in it. And then maybe consider it again. Any further information or any other topics of interest should come up?
We took, we went over the bird feeders, right?
Yeah. I wanna reiterate this closing, clothing allowance.
For what department?
Clothing allowance for all, all complex. Unless you're required to wear a colored uniform, you would not get reimbursed for clothing, which means nobody in, in an office, administrative office, in our case, ours, the case in a nursing home, would not get the so-called $125, 100, yeah, $125 clothing allowance that's in the union contract for the nursing home in particular. And that, should they send in their request with documentation that we do not pay it? Do we have any comments on that?
I agree 100%.
You agree? Okay. Asher, you have any comments on that?
Can you repeat that again, would you say?
Say it again.
Can you repeat that again, would you say?
Anybody, see, the union contract does allow a clothing allowance for everybody that has to wear a colored uniform because that's a requirement, we agree to pay that.
How much is the allowance?
It's $125.
Okay.
They have to show documentation where they have purchased a quip, a...
Uniform.
Uniform, clothing for that purpose. However, there are other people that do not, are not required to wear a uniform that are putting in a request for the $125 with proper documentation, but they're not authorized to get it. So I think we should probably send a notice out to the department, to both the jail, nursing home, even, even here in this building, that we do not pay, we're not paying for uniforms. Now, question comes in regarding the farm. There's always been a concern that they do not get any kind of a clothing allowance. I have an issue with that because if they're out working in a water hole or the fire hydrant or whatever, they need boots, they need equipment.
Never mind that. Have you ever been down in one of the septic holes?
No, but...
You shouldn't be.
Okay. So I guess that's the only exception that I would have and there's a certain limit in the budget for that, I believe. Maybe for safety reasons, health reasons, but that would be my only exception. Okay?
I agree with it.
All right. Anything else we need to talk about?
What you just said, the farm, I think, are they not getting boot allowance?
They did have it in there.
I see that they purchasing boots sometimes and search, they purchase some items, the farm, so that...
I believe there were boot allowance was in there, but I also know that when Randy Lyman was a commissioner, she moved and it was voted to give them jackets for outside wear in the cold weather and that also they needed some kind of identification when they were out reading water meters so that people didn't think that they were snooping around, that either their hat or something on their clothing showed that they worked at the county water department. So...
The last time they spent any money on uniforms was 2010, they spent a little under 600 bucks. 2011, nothing. 2012, nothing. And we budgeted nothing for them this year.
Is there a dollar in that?
No. Well, wait a minute, let's make sure I get the right line. Yes, there is a dollar.
Okay.
But the other information is correct.
All right, I, you know, I think it has a needed basis, whether they need it or not, could be decided by us.
David, I have a little bit of, somewhat of a problem. There's, there's certain situations out on the farm that, that are no different than a woman having to come in and be in a dress and a suit or a guy in his clothes that would be considered just regular work clothes, like going on, coming for the day and working outside. But if he's gotta buy safety, special equipment for, with the exception of the septic, I mean, these guys stink when they get out of there and they shouldn't have to pay, they shouldn't have to buy their own clothes to replace it if they're gonna do that work. But on that, I don't see, there should be any exception.
Okay. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. I'll load the support motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So voted. Thank you, Ed.